Okay, hello Meena ji, hello Ken. And hello Sarah.
Hi.
Over to you to set it up Sarah.
Yeah, this is a really exciting night. I didn't know that this was going to be Manu's special session. So it's a special the age of brilliance session. It's an ask me anything with Manu Mariel. So this time the floor is yours, is ours. So tonight, bring your questions, your wonders, your challenges and your dreams. In this open ask me anything session, Manu Mariel will tune into your inquiries and channel the age, the wisdom of the age of brilliance to eliminate your path. Ask whatever has been stirring in your heart. Receive guidance to dissolve blocks and accelerate your flourishing. Discover insights you did not even know you needed or what you didn't know, you didn't know. This is your experience, our experience to go deeper, get clarity and experience the brilliance that is already within you. So here we go, I'm really excited because this is a real shift. We've never had, as far as I remember, an ask me anything session during these morning evening sessions on Thursday.
Yeah, that's so true. I was also very surprised, you know, there's quite a lot still to, a number of portals still left to be working with. And my guidance was like I used to have the ask me anything on Thursday evening, my time Thursday early morning. Everybody else's time. Now we have, we will have ask me any things in, interlaced in between the age of brilliance. Because what I'm guided with is that the responses will come from how people can leverage the age of brilliance. Because the idea is in your brilliance, you have the solutions, you have the answers to everything. It's just a matter of being guided on how to tap into it. And initially, I mean, I was sharing with Sarah that you know, this year and next year are, are two very specific years in this early part of the setting up of the age of brilliance where the level of intensity is very strong. And it's intense, we all often associate with negative, but it works both ways, you know? So if you are in your brilliance, then spirit really wants to anchor that fully in your being. You know, so it, it'll be, it'll be a very intense rapid anchoring. And literally you will experience synchronicities and you know, like colors of light and orbs and all sorts of signs that will just come at you from all directions and it'll feel magical and, and quite miraculous. And if you have things like, you know, something that you've been holding on to that you find difficult to digest, then there'll be intensity in terms of physical reaction. Because your body is wanting to expel anything and everything that just doesn't serve you anymore. You know, and accentuate and amplify 123 trillion times over, anything and everything that is in service of you rising into your greatness, owning and expressing and knowing the brilliance that you are. So with that having been said, Sarah, over to you. I know we have a couple of people, Ken has raised his hand as has Meena ji and you said you had some questions as well.
Yeah, how should we start?
You begin, you begin, you can begin with your question or you can bring Meena or Ken.
Okay, well, why don't I start off with my question and see where that goes and then Meena and Ken. So I have two things, one, I had this really strange series of synchronicities as I was approaching my dad's death date, which was August 21st. And you know, my dad committed suicide and I was in London, he was here in New York when it happened. So it's a very sensitive time and normally I do something really sacred to celebrate him and my friends because everybody came to be there with me. Well, a few days before this, I had a really strange occurrence. I saw in the evening, an email from the shift, the shift network. And there was this gonna be, it caught my eye and there was gonna be a session on speaking with the, the dead, you know, people who have passed over and spirits and saints and everyone on the other side to ask for their support in manifesting whatever. So for example, the woman who was giving this seminar in the end had a daughter who had been very, with a very rare illness. And then he looked up the different saints who were associated with wellbeing and healing. And she spoke to the, these particular saints and asked them to come and help. And actually they found the solution for her daughters, the doctors didn't know what was going on and they landed up healing her doctor, I mean, she's, her daughter, she still has to live with it. But just for all kinds of things, she said we could ask, you know, from a parking space to healing a loved one. So I thought, oh, well, that's interesting because I have been, over the last many months, I have been thinking about practicing asking my loved ones on the other side and my spirit guides and ascended masters to help me with specific. But I don't have muscle around that. So I signed up really quickly and then I saw the date of the seminar was August 21st in the evening, which is my father's, the end of my father's death date. But the other bizarre thing is, I looked at the name of the woman who's the expert on this, who's giving the seminar. And I thought, I know this person. Well, it turns out she went to college with me. She's a class ahead of me, so she's a classmate. And I just thought these synchronicities are really bizarre. Now, I, my plan was to reach out to her before the seminar and just say, hi Perdita, this is what happened, do you have any insight into this? But I, I didn't do it and I haven't done it and I haven't signed up for the seminar yet. But I wondered if you have, especially since you have had conversations with my father, I felt somebody sent her, what is the message for me? What is to unpack this, like, why did this happen, like, how bizarre, right? Why would all of that, all of these factors come together? So I, I wanna ask you about that and also to ask you, is there anything specific that I am to, to know right now at this time or anything specific I am to be doing, especially around creating prosperity and all, full spectrum prosperity in my life and going back into my life's work?
So Sarah, the, we've, we've done quite a bit of work with your dad. I remember when you were in Bali, we did and we've continued since. This time around, it was really for you to, you know, finally like leap into the the magical, the magical gifts of your own life that, and time for you to like unpack those. But what has been holding you back unbeknown to you is an unfinished dialogue between your father and your mother.
What?
Yeah, so on that day, it, what, what emerged, all of these synchronicities and everything really brought your attention to this piece to do with the passing of your dad, of your, of your dad for this unfinished dialogue to be completed. So I, I can, I'm gonna go ahead and complete the dialogue, okay? And finally then, the energy signature of your father's passing will finally like, you know, release from this planet, from the orbit of the planet, okay? And he will only ever be remembered in his brilliance and okay, so he's, he's already in his light, it's not that he isn't. There is the energy signature of those last moments, which, where he did, actually did not have that dialogue with your mother.
Now, that, is that why sometimes with overall the grieving and death that's happened since mommy died and everybody else since 2020, I will sit at home and I just feel, I feel like I'm trying to figure something out and I can't. And so I just sit there and on my home, is that part of that?
It is part of that, yeah. So let me, let me first complete the dialogue because I don't want to go into any other space. We've held the container so the dialogue can occur. So this is your-
Should I mute or not mute myself?
No, not necessary, not necessary, everyone else is muted. So the dialogue from your father to your mother is, and it is for you to know and for your mother's energy that remains here in your field to understand that she was not to blame. She was not to blame, she did nothing, nothing directly or indirectly that led him to make this choice of taking away the gift of life that he was blessed with. You know, if anything, she, her presence was always there and he had to take action quite swiftly because he felt that it was only going to get worse. And that would impact the whole family. And before his own condition went to that extent, it was time to end it all. And he thought he was ending it all and that would be it. What he had not understood is that him ending it all actually held everybody in pain for decades to come. And was a huge contributor to, and, and then he also wishes to say to your mother that he was taken aback at how massive a pillar of strength she was. Post his passing. If he had known, he could have shared better. He could have shared more, he could have shared deeply. You know, but to him, he was the one that was meant to be the protector and the provider and he did not feel he had the capacity, even though he knew he had the capability to. But within himself, he just didn't feel he had the capacity to. And he also knew the how proud your mother, how proud a person your mother was. So for her to experience his fragility, you know, was, he could already see that it was like puncturing her pride. But he wants to acknowledge her for always being there and for you as his, as his, as the one carrying his legacy forward. It wants you to know that if any underlying doubt you might have even had about, you know, the, the relationship between your father and your mother, just release it. It was, your mother had nothing, this, she was, she was just perfect. And in fact, even beyond perfect. And had that, that ability of hers shone through after he left. You know, and he was just systematically, systematically destroying that with the, with the pain presence because he could see that body developing and getting anchored and solidifying. And it just wasn't something he wanted to share of himself. With that, he is now gone. The energy signature is dissolved. So just allow yourself to receive that. It'll feel like a, like a big, some chest type over here, there was a lot of like heaviness there and you'll just literally be feeling it dissipating initially. And then there'll be a big exhale and it'll be gone from my body. Your mother is saying she already knew.
Yeah, well, you know my mom.
You see her?
Physically, you know. Apparently she knew a lot of things. And I was carrying it.
It was in your field? Of the three, you were the most sensitive of the three?
Yeah.
You know? And that's why you were sometimes a reminder of that hap, that happening to your sister, which is where the pushback primarily came from, from her.
Well, still, still has been.
Yeah, yeah.
Inside is a reminder of my dad for her.
Yeah, yeah.
Also for my dad's partner Sarah.
Yeah.
So is, is this why I just sometimes, I mean, it drives you crazy, I know that, and I know it's been driving everybody crazy, like, why are you stagnant? Why are you not, is that?
Yeah, it's, you, you also wanted to preserve that because there's a part of you that would feel him. And therefore, because you didn't want to believe that it had occurred, for you, it was like not possible. That something like this would occur, he was your hero. You know, and so for whatever reason, even though he's moved on into the light, he's rebirthed.
Rebirth, has, is he rebirthed somewhere, he, he's already been rebirthed.
Yeah, yeah, he's already been rebirthed. I can't quite tell where he has been rebirthed, but he's rebirthed, not in the US, somewhere else.
I keep getting France, but I don't know why, I can't make sense of it.
That's possible, it's somewhere in Europe, northern Europe. So you're, you're picking up the right signals there. So he's already rebirthed and he's in a completely different life and all of that. But this energy signature stayed. And it, yeah, there you go, the exhale.
That was it, right?
Yeah, that is it, that is it. Awesome.
So now what is, wow, I mean, that's a piece I had no idea. Was he trying to communicate that, was somebody trying to communicate that through Perdita? Or through this?
Uh, no, I think it was just the signs, there were just signs. Nothing to be communicated through her, there were just signs as like knock, 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 knock. There's this unfinished business. And it was really him wanting to communicate this to your mother.
Wow.
She held it in her heart all the way until she passed. And then towards the end, she, she was like whole, she was complete within herself, she was like complete. She was actually in a, in a very happy content space when she left. But it remained in you as an underlying question about their relationship, if it had anything to contribute. And therefore the communication needed to occur now and because it interferes with your brilliance shining through, it's like, you know, it's coming in and then there's like a wall of, there's like a dollop of lead, so it's not able to spread across your field because of this, so now it's gone.
Oh, I've been carrying this all.
Yeah.
Whoa. Okay, so I'm conscious there.
And one of the reasons why, you know, certain things that occurred that are linked to his passing, you just don't want to complete those because it's like you're holding on to, you know, if only I knew. So now you know that it was, you know, why he did what he did and it was nothing, you know, really his acknowledgement of your mother and, you know, a wonderful surprise at noticing how strong she was. You know, now you can let go of that, you have all the answers done.
So just a very quick follow up is, or maybe you and I can have that conversation is, what is there for me to do now?
Get on with it. Cross the finish line. Get across the finish line really is the answer from the age of brilliance. Because if you get on with it and not get across the finish line, you will just be looping, looping, looping and it'll make you go loopy.
Well, it's already.
Yeah.
Wow, okay, so I, it's a lot to, it feels like, I thought after this call I'll do some work, but I think it's just for me to be.
Yeah, just simply be with it and release whatever might be there as energy signatures that impacts your cells to be, to be dissolved. That's the beauty of the age of brilliance. You know, we don't have to let go of anything, you can just say, okay, go ahead, bring in the dissolve bucket. You know, just pour whatever that wonderful divine fluid is all over you from the age of brilliance. And it just, as it travels through your cells, it dissolves away, whatever doesn't serve you.
To my, my gratitude to my, my dad and my mom, my dad for revealing this to you, for you and to you and to tonight's session for me to host it with you.
I know, can you imagine?
I wasn't planning on being on the session, I was gonna go to my meditation course. But I, I, as soon as David and Helene, I got your message, I was like, yep, okay. I didn't even look, I didn't know what the topic was tonight, I just showed up and said, I'll do it.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, wow, okay, I'm gonna split with all this. Thank you everybody for your deep listening. Some people on the call know mom and, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, let's bring Meena ji in.
Meena, now how do we do, how do I do that?
I'll bring her in and I will just remove you from spotlight Sarah. Hello, hello Meena ji. I say, don't ask me anything today, I always like feel you. I can see this such a like, you know, if, if they were like, you know, like we have those big huge pickle jars that we make these pickles in, it's like there's a whole series of those where there are layers and layers of questions.
You know, I, I'm so surprised that so many times, I don't know if you get that vibration or not, I'm just talking to you. Not, I'm not writing to you, not actually calling you, but I'm talking to you. I tell me knows you about this, I'll ask. I ask, wherever I am, I'm asking question and by the, my turn comes, I forget everything. Okay, now, because from tomorrow onwards, in Hindu calendar, Shraddha coming, Pitru Paksha. Pitru Paksha, you will understand my, you know. So what I'm saying is, many religions don't believe in the second, next life or reincarnation and all, many religion. So like, does that happen to them also and they don't know about it, they're ignorant or their belief system? Because like, and part B of this question is, do I need to do anything for Vansh Mokti or Pitru Dosh Nimaran? Because some things, like I feel my children don't want to have children and all, so these things, you know, part of me is missing something. Is it a part of that, Pitru Dosh, or there is some ancestor who? I've done what you're asking to do about mental peace and doing ancestors. I wasn't too particular or too regular, too accurate, but still I did it.
Okay, so Pitru Paksha is a particular time in the Hindu calendar where you honor your ancestors during that time. And it is like really giving peace to your ancestry. That's really what this is about, right? Meena ji, is that the right way to summarize it? Yeah, okay, so, so first of all, what I have understood is a soul only takes one human birth. A soul only takes one human birth. And it changes the casing. If the human form is now becoming decrepit and not capable of continuing the expansion that the soul, soul took the human birth for. So this, this, you know, we make such a huge deal of, you know, reincarnation and this and that from a soul perspective, it is still on its journey of human birth. And now it's time to discard this human form because for whatever reason, it's not going, it's, it's not going to support further expansion in this human form, so it leaves that and finds another one and then, you know, continues its journey until it's whole and complete and the expansion is done and then it doesn't need to take, doesn't need to remain human again. So it, yeah, when, when there are some, some people who are non-believers in this theory of reincarnation and there are certain religions that don't believe in, in, in this rebirth and all of that. It's because, you know, at a core level, from their own perspective of their own divinity, the answer is there is only one human birth and there is only one human birth that the soul takes. It just takes different human forms based on how capable the, the capacity of the human form is for the expansion that the soul has chosen to experience through this human form, okay? So it is the same for everyone. Now Pitru Paksha, I'm going to talk about in a moment. There are two separate questions, so first one is, is the, first one, the response is this. Do, do they also, are they also impacted by ancestors and lineages and, and all of that? Everyone is, you know, everyone is. And in, in many ways, you know, it, there is, there is always for something to, you know, like many times I talk about, you know, you are an archetype, archetype through whom any, any changes that are occurring in you, sometimes I do that when I do the beyond meditation practice, I'll say, whatever is going on with you, you're through your, you're an archetype representation of many humans on the planet that also are like this, they may be completely different. They may not be from your religion, they may not be from your country, they may not, they may be anywhere else. But they are an archetype, you're an archetype that is similar to, to them, everyone is benefited from what we do. So it, it is, it's, everyone is benefited. India is the seed of wisdom. So this, these things are very much present there. A lot of indigenous wisdom has many things that they do in terms of ancestor honoring, ancestral honoring. And Pitru Paksha in many ways is an ancestral honoring, it happens once a year. Each year, you know? So that would be my response to this, everyone benefits from any form of blessing in this age of brilliance that occurs because like literally, you know, the, the pathways have cleared out quite beautifully.
Yeah, I wanted to ask, yeah, I wanted to ask that in Pitru, Pitru Paksha, they say don't eat non-vegetarian food and do all these things. But we have never done that, entire family doesn't believe, nobody conforms to that and it becomes difficult also because of their work and their meetings and all and, you know, like they, they don't understand and I never put it, my mother-in-law did not put it. So you know, we are not following that. So it, does that make a difference to, like, they, they ask us to feed the pundit and not eat this, not eat that. So you know, it becomes little concern, concern to me.
Yeah, yeah, so the important thing is that in the, in the, in the olden days when certain descriptions were created about festivals and, and how you can, how you conduct yourself, there were times of the year that were, that were taken to support people to reclaim the health and vitality. You know, so by having certain times of the year where you really come back to nature. When you come back to nature, you anchor yourself in a state of okayness. Now, come back to nature doesn't necessarily mean not, you know, not eating meats and stuff like that. It just, it's because there will be people who just lived with, in, close to the oceans and they would be eating fish because that is what they had, they didn't have anything else. So it is more about coming close, becoming one with nature and allowing nature to nurture you without you having to think about it. And when you allow nature to nurture you, you're in a state of okayness. Your ancestors are being honored, so they can actually pass down their wisdom and move on. A lot of the time, the ancestral control piece that sometimes stops people happens because we haven't um, allowed their wisdom to come through. For whatever reason, you know, we, um, so this, this whole thing about, don't get dogmatic about anything. In the age of brilliance, it's not about dogma, about anything at all. It's like, okay, it's time to honor our, our ancestors, to allow ourselves to receive the wisdom that is in service of our greatness in this age of brilliance. Um, and you know, you can do that in any way. You know, you can do that in your own prayers. You can do that, uh, by blessing the food that you eat, whatever it is that you're eating. You know, you can do that by using this, you can do that by using this month to attune yourself to what your body wants to eat. You know, just feel into your body. Let, let it tell you if it wants to eat vegetables, eat, eat, you eat vegetables as opposed to I have to do this at this time. Age of brilliance is not about command and control at all. There is no space for that command and control energy. So that, that will feel heavy. You know? So just feel into your, you, you use it for, you know, really get, remaining, keeping anchored in okayness. Getting close to nature and asking your body to tell you what it wants to eat today. And it's, age of brilliance is about your brilliance. When you are in your brilliance, you automatically shine and that light of brilliance shines out the brilliance in the others. No, it's, this age of brilliance is really about, it is starting to already dissolve dogma of all kinds. You know, it's time to celebrate anything and everything. Like I woke up this morning and it is Onam. Onam is a very special um, festival celebrated in Kerala. And I said, oh my God, I'm in Dubai and Dubai has Onam sadhas, which is this humongous meal, right, that they make. Um, uh, so I mean, I booked us for a sadha on Sunday. And then I, this, then it is, it is also, all the schools are closed today. And I was like, why are the schools closed? And I felt that there was another big celebration and an anchoring of a huge happening, uh, on the planet. And it is actually Prophet Muhammad's birthday today as well. So if you look, you know, there's so many of these different festivals in different religions and different parts of the world that are, that sort of coalesce around similar times. You know, uh, but we, we just, it's, it's, it's fine that different religions, you know, are, uh, are about the festival that is, that they know of, not realizing that there are many others in the world um, that are happening around the same time. So there's something about this time, you know. Um, it's a time of great portal opening of divine blessings coming into the planet. So Pitru. Yeah, Pitru Pash is a, is a time for, of great blessings. Release the dogma. That's what I would say. And work with your body. Yes, go on, you were saying. Is Meenaji frozen?
Yeah, it looks, she looks frozen. It's unusual, she's here. She's, there she is.
Yeah, well, I was taking off my airport. Uh, I, I wanted to find out ancestors from my husband's side and from my side. Are they happy? Are they blessing or they need anything that I, we should need to do in this lifetime?
Uh, some, uh, there are two very different clans, energy, energy-wise, they're very different clans. Um, so is there anything that, uh, they require? Don't be, don't be the piggy in the middle. Um, you know, just sta, take a stand for yourself and your life. And embrace your aliveness. That's it. That's all you are to do. And, and you know, they are at peace anyway. So it's, um, they're not collaborating and co-creating with each other. They're in their, in their plans. You, you just.
I didn't know that. I didn't know that. Actually, I thought we are Punjabis from the same background in Pakistan. So I, I was finding similarities. Now you cleared it.
Yeah.
But I feel there, from my mother's side, everybody's good. I, I, I feel that. You can confirm it or you can.
Yeah, they're, 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 both sides are, are at peace. No, you know, they're both at peace.
Okay, okay. All right, I have any questions, but I, for this time, it's always a surprise, surprise. And thank you much. Always ingratitude to you. Thank you.
Okay, Ken, uh, you're not online, but yes, I'm here for your question. I know you have your hand raised. You'll need to unmute, Ken. Unmute, Ken.
There we go.
There you are.
Good morning.
Good morning, good morning, good morning, just. Yeah.
Here, here in the north of Thailand, I've just spent, uh, the most extraordinary full week celebrating the Ganeshah and I don't know if the word is right, but Chaturta would be how you would say it.
Ganesh Chaturta, yeah.
Yes, and, uh, I continue to feel energetically. I'm in a time like no other. I'm facilitating my groups. It's all going really well. And concurrently, and I guess the interesting part to me is all of these places I go. Bali, uh, with a whole family of healers, Bhutan, northern Thailand. One drinks the holy water. And I find myself currently, and that's just one possible reason, with a bacterial infection that on some level has recurred. Uh, the, the level of unpleasantness is almost at zero, but it's there, zero to one. And so there's a reconciliation for me of something I've done since the seventies. And maybe perhaps for the safety of my physical body and the health of my physical body, that I adjust how I dance with the holy water. One of my teacher leaders that's always come to me, always has told people, which has always been funny to me. She says, don't drink the holy water. You dribble it on your chin and pretend that you've drinking it.
Hmm.
And, and so here I am and I do have a little bit, but I'm not going allopathic with this. I'm not taking antibiotics, which they would like me to take. And I, I'm healing it naturally. And I, I'd love you to say something about that because it also has to do with Sambot, who's like hugely, hugely supporting my diet. You know, and you know, he's an amazing chef and I'm, I'm mostly eating vegan now, but I'm not, as you just talked about, it was so helpful what you just talked about with Meenaji. Cause I'm, I'm flexible in what my physical tells me to do.
Uh, so Ken, I mean, you'd be surprised at my response. This time, allow the, um, the antibiotic, um, creatures to support you. It just requires a little bit more than what food can deliver right now.
Yes.
Okay, so you will make your own choice and always choose what is best for you. And it will be best for all.
Well, may, I speak part of the issue with the antibiotics. The only reason I don't take antibiotics in this case is because they reek, because of, as a child, I, my mother and my family had me on tetracycline for acne three times a day for five years. So my stomach has a huge physical reaction that almost feels like it's an ulcer when I put antibiotics into my stomach.
So I was going to continue with something, yeah? Um, so you, you may or may not have heard, there are times where I've talked about ways in which you can support your, your stomach um, by allowing, um, your own fluid, your, your own blood to rush in that region. So as you're treating yourself with antibiotics this time around, you know, take a towel or take uh, a, take, uh, like a cloth band, but a towel is pretty good if you don't have a cloth band that you, you dip in cold water, squeeze it out tight, tightly and wrap it around your gut region. You know, front and back and keep it like that for thirty minutes. And whilst you have the course of antibiotics, Ken, uh, I don't know how you will manage it, but if you're able to do this for thirty minutes, four times a day, it's a lot, I know, but four times a day, you're, you're, you will not have the reactions that you had previously to antibi, antibiotics. I mean, my, my body really suffers, um, massively as well with antibiotics and I just don't take it, uh, as much as I can avoid it. And yet, there are times where, um, it is important for your physical, um, regeneration for antibiotics to be brought in. I will work with your system so that you only get the benefits and not the negative effects. I will do, I will work with you on that.
Okay, thank you so much, Manu.
Okay. Um, now what will also be helpful, it's weird, but what will also be helpful at this time, we just, you're taking the antibiotics, you just want the antibiotics to have their impact. So for those five days or whatever it is, the course that they give you, don't have, um, don't have stuff like uh, kefir or yogurt or anything. Because that is like, so then the antibiotics have got not just the infection bacteria, but also that to deal with.
Yes.
Okay, so oil pulling extremely important at this time. Okay, so make sure that you do oil pulling as well. Only in the morning, don't do oil pulling anytime during the day, just in the morning.
Okay.
Water sip at a time.
Yes.
Do you know how to do self-administered Anima?
Uh, no, I don't.
Okay.
But I'm, I'm extremely regular.
Okay.
Like my system is like super working.
Okay, okay, okay. Yeah, I'll keep tuning in. If I feel that there is anything that you require, then I'll let you know, but this combo will actually be pretty good for you.
Okay, so may I, may I ask one more question?
No, I, I have to complete my answer to you.
Okay.
Okay, so this is all the physiological stuff. The other thing that will really support you and will support all of us is if you open the flourishing code and read the code for the day. You know, and just really be it.
Okay, that's very easy. I tried on my computer.
Yeah, yeah. And we will be very grateful if you just share with us the code for the day. It'll, plus connected to, uh, you know, holding the container for that full healing of yours.
Okay. So may I ask one more question?
Yeah.
It's very interesting to me that at a time energetically, there's so much expansion. Uh, it's a time like no other, what I'm offering my groups where I am energetically. Uh, I've never been in a time like this in my life. It's happening concurrently with this though.
Hmm.
And so there's nothing really to be said to that, or maybe there is.
I have to do some work on you because, um, uh, you know, wherever you're taking your groups, um, because there's a, there's a great amount of very highly spiritual, very high vibration work that occurs. Um, but in those spaces, uh, because there's so much of this very high vibration that's coming down, whatever remains of very low vibes is being, you know, the planet is using those spaces as a way of releasing the very low vibe out of the orbit of the planet. Um, so just want to ensure that none of that actually comes into your field.
Okay.
It is occurring concurrently because, um, you know, it's a great opportunity for the up-leveling and upliftment of the planet. Um, you know, the archetype and the work that you do with the sounds, you know, including your own Tibetan chanting as well as the, uh, the singing bowls and and other sounds by these amazing divine, uh, you know, descended angels um, in human form that you work with in your groups. Um, all of that, you know, raises the vibrations. So like literally right now, the divine is using whatever help it can get from anybody who raises the vibration so that, um, it, the concentration of negative vibes go in that region to leave the planet. The important thing is you remain protected and members of your group will automatically be protected. So I'll just do some work on that.
Okay, and the last thing I'd like to tell you is with what you say, I'm not surprised that I'm about to go into Tibet next month. I haven't been for a few years, October twenty ninth until November twelfth. Uh, I will be on a very sacred journey that I'm leading into bed. And that somehow is something I have to say right now because of all the places I could do what I do. It feels like Tibet is one of those places that it's really being called for.
Yeah, yeah, perfect, perfect, perfect.
Okay, thank you, Manu.
Thank you. Ananta, I'm going to come to you in a moment, but I'm guided to share. I said I have a surprise on Unstoppable, um, today. Uh, which is, there's a, there's a new gift. Remember I, I mentioned that I'm going through another series of spiritual awakenings? And every time I do that, there's a new gift that emerges. And the new gift that has emerged and David and Helene, you've played a very big role in, in anchoring that gift is, uh, a gift of, um, giving music to my poetry. Uh, my, the first downloads that I got when I began my spiritual awakening and Sarah, you're very aware of it because you came into the, into Bali in those early days. Um, they were, it was actually the gift of, uh, me writing poetry. You know, so I have this book Unstoppable that's coming out and I didn't really make that correlation. Um, except that when I sent the book Unstoppable to the early readers, these are young adults, their responses were such that they were sharing their experiences. And, and Ken, you were in your vibrational age, also one of those young readers who shared your own life experiences from, you know, reading the chapters of the book and, and stuff. And I was so inspired that I took the words of the stories of the readers and created a poem out of it. And then, um, with assistance from our, our bot team, uh, converted those, that poetry into a song. And then with assistance from David and Helene, um, I was guy, you know, I was guided to work, uh, and with technology again and created this song. So I haven't yet released it, uh, you know, but I will be releasing it. The book Unstoppable starts its launch sequence from Monday. So I will share all of that with you, but I'm guided to just share this song with you. So just bear with me. So I will share all of that with you, but I'm guided to just share this song with you, so just bear with me.
Wow. Wow. Oh my gosh, wow.
It's just been so much fun.
Should we, should we unmute everybody and just let everybody do a wow or whatever they want to express? In, in sound.
Yes, yes, yes.
Between my dad and my mom's conversation and that. Wow, okay.
Yeah, and you know, it's got me to really pull out my book of poetry and um, I've uh, now actually got ten amazing songs out of all these. There, there were forty-five poems that I wrote, they were the first set of downloads. And
Well, I remember you in Bali on your bed with the notebook.
Yeah.
Writing the poetry.
Yeah, yeah, the first three or four years were poem, 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 poem. Yeah, it just really touches my heart, I mean, I don't know how many times I've heard this.
Whoa, I know, I, I feel like, I'm sure we can all keep listening, it was just, wow, 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 okay.
Thank you for the blessing of you, David and Helene, you really helped me open up a whole new world of magic and wonder. Okay, Ananta, let's have.
Thank you. Oh, spotlight, okay. Um, so this year I took on the non-negotiable of um, not ignoring my body's signals at all. And I have struggled for the last like many years now on and off with breakouts because I think there was just a lot of the autopilot anger that was coming through and not having an outlet to come out and not being digested fully, there's just so much, you know, there. And I just wanted to report that it's like the first time that it's actually like fully clear and not like that much scars even there. You know, like I'm not wearing any makeup, like I just feel like my body is really happy right now. So I wanted to honor that because of the work that I did with you, you know, and just taking it on that whatever is hard, I'm gonna do in my source, knowing my source, knowing the autopilot and knowing that the skin was totally the autopilot just expressing itself, you know, and realizing like how much of my life got drained in my own autopilot. And actually, I have a strong source and just, you know, like knowing that I think has made a huge difference and it finally gave me a feeling of agency over this reoccurring thing that was so deep that nobody could help me with. You know, it's so many things and like it's just been such a constant battle, you know, and I'm like, okay, and so the, the thing is like to listen to, to this source, you know, and be the source and just keep on going with it, but I just wanted to check in with you and also to um, just ask you for any guidance in general, particularly around relationships and just anything that you see.
It's one thing that I'm getting, Ananta, that will really support you is um, to, you know, do this cold towel thing that I told, told Ken, you just have to do it once a day. You know, uh, so just, just wet it up and squeeze it and just put it over your tummy.
Okay.
For half an hour, that will really help, there's a lot of fire there.
Yeah.
Uh, and ideally you would do it, um, if you, if you did it with a towel, you can just wrap that cold towel around front and back, so then at the back, it will also support the blood supply to go into your kidneys. Okay? Um, so that'll be really helpful, so that's one. Um, what else am I seeing? In the context of relationships, you know, there's a, there is a series, a TV series which those of us who've lived in England know well, it's called Little Britain, I don't know if you've ever seen it. I'll, I'll send you a little clip, there's a character in this, right, it's, it's written by these two guys. And they just played men and women of different, very, very um, distinct character, British characteristic, uh, characters. And there's one character who's a schoolgirl. And she's like constantly into, if you ask her a question, she won't give you a straight answer, she will say, uh, she'll say something and then she'll say, yes, but, no, but, yes, but, no, but, yes, but, no, but, and lots of words in between the yes, but, no, but, yes, but, no, but, right? Uh, so the issue in, on the, in the context of relation, but I see the yes, but, no, but, yes, but, no, but, yes, but, no, but. Uh, you know, uh, noise that is there in you, okay? You can, you're in a good space now. So all you can, all you, all that is called for is for you to just breathe life into your um, your, the, the safety that actually exists and in your core around relating in relationships. Okay, so there is, there are relationships and you can have a relationship but have no relating in that relationship at all. Maybe it's because you've inherited it, it's because it's part of the legacy that um, that you stepped into and that can happen sometimes at work, you know, you go in and there are various people that are already dead and so as a legacy, you've got all of these relationships that are there, but you don't have to relate to them. You know, but you muddle everything up. You know, you can have a relationship, for example, with, you know, you've got a teacher and there's a relationship of a teacher and a student. You don't have to relate, you, you don't have to have any relating there as such. You know, they are, they are, and it, it could just become purely functional. And it could be completely holistic, but your body will tell you. But because you go into the yes, but, no, but, yes, but, no, but, yes, but, no, but, then um, it's, it's like I, you know, you can pause relating for a period of time. And you can wholly embrace relating without having to worry about, am I safe in this or am I? You know, yes, but it feels this way, I mean, no, but it doesn't feel like, or whatever. You, can you get what I'm saying, the yes, but, no, but um, noise that you create?
Yeah, yeah, I think so, just like uncertainty.
Yeah, and there is actually no uncertainty because, you know, you're, you're someone who um, is like in no uncertain terms, you can make choices with absolute clarity. You know, you've got that amazing gift. So, you know, certainty is in your field quite comfortably sits there. You know, and this, because of this dialoguing that comes up, um, it, uh, it feels uh, confusing. So you just have to choose, I'm gonna just operate from certainty in this realm of relationships and you will cross the threshold into exquisite enchanting relationships.
What does that mean?
What does it mean? You tell me, what does exquisite enchanting relationship mean to you?
Something consistent would be nice, you know, it feels very like what you said, like on off, on off, like because I'm also feeling into like, is it okay to do this, you know, is it gonna disturb someone else, like there, there are a lot of those kind of external things happening and I just never wanna like bother someone, you know, or like hurt someone inadvertently by a connection that I have with someone. And that has come up a lot in my life, you know, so I think that's part of the, the thing, like there will be a, a connection, I don't doubt it, but I don't wanna disturb anything. And I don't want it to get
But just always feel into yourself and look at what is this, is this best for me? Stand in the realm of okayness before I take the next step, is this best for me? And if your body feels that unequivocal flow of yaminas, go forward. You know, don't, don't overanalyze anything, no need. And if your body, if your body may not feel good, don't do it. Now, there'll be part of you that really wants to go forward, but you just say, okay, I'm just gonna really partner with my body. Because you know, in the context of relationships, your body really does communicate in your face.
But can it not do that anymore, you think, now that it's clear, is it gonna come back?
Uh, only, only if you hold anger, so do an anger audit and dissolve it, you know, this is the age of brilliance. You can just keep dissolving it and li- literally be your source to yourself from time to time.
Yeah, well, I have a ritual that I do every day that I've been dissolving it with and now I realized, okay, it's definitely working because I see it clear. But do you think I should just keep doing it, even though it's clear right now?
Yeah, 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 just keep doing it until it'll, you, you'll just not need to think about it anymore.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'll, uh, Mary Catherine, I will be sharing the, the song as soon as we have everything lined up for it to be distributed. Right now, it's in the process of um, solidifying the engine that's gonna distribute it. So we should have it done today. It is, I, I start my morning with it. Over to you, Sarah, to complete our session.
Wow. I just, wow. I'm to complete and I think everybody's on board with me and uh, around this is, is like the deepest loving exquisite divine gratitude for you and for all that you share with us. I know it takes some, it, it takes more than something every day, all the time, for you to keep this up. Um, I know it's your life's work and it's your passion. And I want to acknowledge you for.
Thank you, I feel very blessed and I'm really just, my, my only job is to show up, that's what I do.
And my mom and dad, along with your mom and dad.
Yeah.
You've had many conversations with them and you know my mother. Um, she just, I wanna also pass on her her love, she has this brilliant, multicolored love for you and gratitude for you and so does my dad, I can feel it, you've never got to meet my dad in person, but.
Yeah.
You have more angels on this side, along with your, your own. I'm, I'm just like, wow, I, I, I've been yawning a lot, so I can feel that there's something processing through me. Wow, thank you for all you've shared with us tonight.
You're welcome, let's just complete by each person just sharing a one word to complete our session, it was a very powerful session. Um, so you can unmute yourself, everyone, I think you should be able to. And we'll just go on to gallery view, I think we can remove us a spotlight.
So I'll start with the div- divine blessings.
Okay. And you can pass it to the next person. Unmute, unmute Sarah.
Lee, Lee, I pass to you.
Yeah, um, flourishing and gratitude and I'll pass it to um, Helene.
Compassion and love.
You can pass it to?
And I'll pass it to
Uh, miracles. And I, uh, and I'll pass it to Connie.
Uh, blessings. I will pass it on to Mary Catherine.
Grace and gratitude and I pass to Stephen.
Blessings to me and Prema.
Love. Love.
Thank you, Prema, you can pass it to Ken.
Okay.
Unconditional, unconditional love and transformation.
Thank you, Ken, and you pass it to Sunny Varsha Meenaji Neelam.
I'll pass to Mina. Mina. Yes.
Mina, you'll need to unmute. Okay, she may not be there, but Varsha, over to you.
Unstoppable and thank you.
You're welcome, Neelam.
Yes. Unstoppable and awesome.
And Ananta?
Um, gratitude.
Yeah. Pathways is what I'm getting as my completion word. So with that, I declare our session complete, thank you, everyone, thank you.
Thank you.
Sunny, 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 you're, you're
And David.
Sunny hasn't shared her completion word, unmute Sunny. Okay, fine, we complete with Sunny too, thank you. Namaste.
Thank you. God bless everybody, love you.
Bye bye.
Love you too. Oh, Neelam, are blessed.
No, you know.
Good morning, good night.